Good evening. Florida's Turnpike Enterprise welcomes you to the public hearing for the Turnpike Widening from US-1, south of Palm Drive to Campbell Drive PD&E Study with Financial Project Identification Number 439545-1. I would like to formally open the public hearing. Today is Tuesday, July 20th, 2021, and the time is approximately 6:02 PM. My name is Jaslyn Heywood. I am the Turnpike Project Manager for the PD&E Study and am moderating this public hearing from Turnpike Headquarters in Ocoee, Florida. Cassie Peash, the Consultant Project Manager from Stanley Consultants, is overseeing the in-person location at the Homestead Miami Speedway in Homestead, Florida. We are both being supported by representatives of Turnpike and consultant staff. At this time, we would like to recognize all federal, state, county, or city officials who are present tonight. I will now announce those who registered online. Mayor Otis Wallace, City of Florida City; Mayor Stephen Losner, City of Homestead; Commissioner Thomas Harding, City of Key Colony Beach; Raphael Cazales, Town Manager, Town of Cutler Bay; John Ward, Executive Director, Florida City Community Redevelopment Agency, CRA; Councilman David Webb; Isla Morata Village; Councilman Sean Fletcher, City of Homestead; Councilman Larry Roth, City of Homestead; Julio Brea, City of Homestead Director of Public Works; Frank Bowlesabray, Office of Congressman Carlos Jimenez; LaVencia Als, District Secretary for Florida State Representative Kevin Chambliss; Leah Duran, from the Office of State Senator Anna Maria Rodriguez. Cassie, are there any officials at your location that I have not already identified?
We have the following officials from the City of Florida City. We have Vice Mayor Roy Shiver; we have Commissioners Eugene Berry, Sharon Smith Butler, and James Gold. If there's anyone from the City of Florida City that I have missed, if you'd like to raise your hand, then please state your name. Okay. From the City of Homestead, we also have Erica Avila. I did not get your Councilwoman. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else from the City of Homestead that's present that has not been recognized? Thank you. That's all, Jaslyn.
Well, thank you, Cassie. We will now watch the narrated public hearing presentation.
Florida's Turnpike Enterprise welcomes you to the public hearing for the Turnpike Widening from US-1, south of Palm Drive, to Campbell Drive, Project Development and Environment, or PD&E Study. The proposed improvements include the widening of Florida's Turnpike, a toll Turnpike ramp over the Palm Drive and US-1 intersection, a new partial interchange at Lucy Street, southwest 328th Street, as well as access modifications. This hearing is being held to provide you with the opportunity to comment on this project. This hearing is being conducted in a hybrid format to provide multiple opportunities for the public to receive information and provide input. This approach uses face-to-face, virtual, and telephone components. This public hearing is being recorded, and a verbatim transcript will be made of all oral proceedings. The public hearing video will be posted to the project website, and a link to the video will be provided by email to all persons that registered. If you happen to experience technical issues during the meeting, please send an email to tpkmeetingsupport@dot.state-fl.us to report it. Turnpike staff will do their best to assist you. We will follow this agenda, starting first with the purpose of the public hearing and how you can provide input. We will then review the preferred and no-build alternative and open the public comment period. The purpose of this public hearing is to share information with the general public about the proposed improvements, its conceptual design, all alternatives under study, access management changes, and the potential beneficial and adverse social, economic, and environmental impacts upon the community. The public hearing also serves as an official forum, providing an opportunity for members of the public to express their opinions regarding the project. There have been various opportunities for the public to provide input on this project. A public information meeting held on January 21st, 2020 was one such opportunity, where 121 people attended and 27 written comments were received and responded to. We continue to encourage public input to help us make this important decision. You can submit written comments at the project website, www-turnpikesouthmiamidade.com. If at the Homestead Miami Speedway, you can complete a printed comment form; you can email the project manager directly; and lastly, you can mail in your written comments. The project manager's contact information will be spelled out for the benefit of our listen-only participants towards the end of the presentation. It is also available on the hearing notification that you may have received by mail. You can also make verbal comments. If attending at the Homestead Miami Speedway, please fill out a request-to-speak card to comment at a microphone during the public comment period. There is also a court reporter to whom you can provide your comments directly. Virtual participants that requested to speak when registering will be called upon during the public comment period. Every comment method carries equal weight. While comments and questions will be accepted at any time, those submitted or postmarked by July 30th, 10 calendar days after the public hearing, will become part of the study's public hearing record. We will respond to all comments and questions in writing at a later date. This public hearing was advertised consistent with federal and state requirements. The proposed project is being developed in accordance with the Civil Rights Act of 1964. Under Title VI of the Civil Rights Act, public participation is solicited without regard to race, color, national origin, age, sex, religion, disability, or family status. Please contact one of the Title VI coordinators shown here to express any concerns regarding Florida's Turnpike's compliance with Title VI. The study involved coordination with City of Florida City, City of Homestead, Miami-Dade County, the Miami-Dade Transportation Planning Organization, and various state and federal regulatory agencies. Agency coordination will continue in future phases of the project. This public hearing was advertised in the Florida Administrative Register, FDOT's Public Notices website, the Miami Herald, Miami Herald Neighbors, El Nueva Herald, and South Dade News Leader. In addition, adjacent property owners, interested individuals, elected and appointed officials, Native American tribes, and government agencies were notified about tonight's public hearing. Draft project documents are available for viewing until July 30th, 2021, at the Librarian in Homestead, Florida. Project documents are also available on the project website at www-turnpikesouthmiamidade.com. The study area is located in south Miami-Dade County. Study limits begin on US-1, south of Palm Drive, and extends three miles northeast to Campbell Drive. This includes the southern terminus of Florida's Turnpike and the Campbell Drive interchange. Let's review existing roadway conditions, starting first at Campbell Drive and working our way south to the southern terminus. The Campbell Drive interchange is a full interchange, accommodating all movements between Campbell Drive and Florida's Turnpike. A new northbound on-ramp opened to traffic in 2019. The Turnpike main line is currently two travel lanes in each direction. The entire Turnpike system plays an important role in support of Florida's economy and the mobility of both people and freight. The southern terminus of Florida's Turnpike is located between Palm Drive and Davis Parkway. Exit 1 exits onto Davis Parkway. Left turns onto southbound US-1 are now allowed after a recently completed project. The US-1 exit ramp exits onto southbound US-1. There are also two entrance ramps allowing access to northbound Turnpike from both directions on US-1. The Palm Drive and US-1 intersection is a critical intersection. This study evaluated its distance from the US-1 exit ramp and how it constrains traffic flow. A separate study evaluated how it constrains emergency evacuations. The Palm Drive intersection is located approximately 450 feet south of the US-1 exit ramp. Within this distance, drivers must observe traffic signal phases and weave among other vehicles to position themselves into the desired lane. This creates vehicle conflict points and leads to congestion. The Palm Drive signal operates over capacity in three scenarios. First, during peak morning and afternoon local commuter traffic. Second, during holidays and weekends with heavy southbound Keys traffic. And third, when peak afternoon local traffic combines with heavy southbound Keys traffic, typically on Friday afternoons. The inability of the signal to process the heavy volume of traffic, combined with a weaving condition, leads to congestion on local roads and on the US-1 exit ramp. The third scenario creates the longest queues, which often extend along the US-1 exit ramp back to Davis Parkway, creating safety concerns for stopped vehicles in the Turnpike high-speed lanes. The poor Palm Drive and US-1 intersection capacity cannot be corrected by re-timing the signals. Congestion contributes to crashes. Crash rates for portions of the Turnpike main line, shown in orange, are double that for similar highways. The crash rates at the US-1 intersections with Palm Drive and Davis Parkway are three times greater than at similar intersections. The economic cost of crashes that occurred between 2013 and 2017, including fatalities, injuries, and property damage, is estimated to be $225 million. The Palm Drive and US-1 intersection was identified as a constraining point on the emergency evacuation route, and several improvement options were studied in a 2012 evacuation planning study. The recommended permanent solution was to construct a two-lane Turnpike ramp over Palm Drive. The study area falls within the "south transportation planning area" as defined by the Miami-Dade Transportation Planning Organization. Between 2015 and 2045, the TPO projects 46.5% population growth and a 39.7% increase in employment. Projected population and employment growth, along with an increase in tourist traffic, will increase travel demand and congestion on the transportation system. Based on projected increase in travel demand, six travel lanes, three in each direction, are needed north of Campbell Drive by 2025. Within the study limits, six lanes, three in each direction, are needed by 2042. Ramp capacity improvements are needed by 2028, and Palm Drive and US-1 intersection improvements are needed immediately. Adding lanes to southbound Turnpike or the exit ramps without improving the intersection will exacerbate ongoing issues by increasing approaching traffic to an intersection that already cannot handle the volume. Bottleneck conditions would get worse. The purpose and need for a project provides the basis for developing, considering, evaluating, and eliminating project alternatives. The project's purpose and need are to enhance safety, address 2045 traffic needs, enhance emergency evacuation, and improve accessibility and mobility. Improving traffic operations at the Palm Drive and US-1 intersection is key in meeting the project purpose and need. The main feature of the preferred build alternative is a toll Turnpike ramp over Palm Drive, one lane in each direction. The existing entrance and exit ramps will remain. This graphic shows what the proposed improvements could look like. We are looking northeast at Palm Drive. The toll Turnpike ramp will run down the center of US-1, over the Palm Drive intersection. Providing this additional route will improve traffic circulation and allow for safer, less congested traffic flow through the Palm Drive intersection. Traffic separators just north of the intersection will prevent weaving and further enhance safety. This view looks southeast towards Palm Drive. The toll Turnpike ramp continues south of Palm Drive and returns to grade level about 1,800 feet south of the intersection. Southbound motorists using the ramp will be able to U-turn to access businesses on both sides of US-1. Both the northbound and southbound ramp will be told. This video shows the proposed improvements at the Palm Drive and US-1 intersection. A Texas U-turn on northbound US-1 will provide convenient free-flow access to southbound US-1. Landscaping opportunities will be maximized during design and implemented once construction is complete. Crosswalks and a large median will allow for safe pedestrian crossings. Traffic flow on US-1 will improve. The Turnpike ramp will change access along US-1. No access changes are proposed along US-1 between Palm Drive and Davis Parkway. South of Palm Drive, three full median openings will be consolidated into U-turns. Southbound drivers will be able to U-turn south of southwest 352nd Street. Northbound drivers will be able to U-turn just south of the Palm Drive intersection. A new directional median opening, allowing northbound left turns, is proposed at southwest 352nd Street. Additional right-of-way, limited to the east side of US-1, will be needed to construct the toll Turnpike ramp. The Turnpike main line will be widened to six travel lanes, three in each direction. Widening will occur towards the median. A noise analysis has been performed to determine locations where noise walls are potentially feasible and reasonable. Results of the noise analysis are presented at today's public hearing. A Lucy Street interchange was requested by the City of Homestead and a developer to provide direct access to potential development in the vicinity of the Turnpike. The proposed partial interchange would provide a southbound off-ramp and a northbound on-ramp. Most of the right-of-way needed to construct the interchange is on developer-owned land. Access modifications will occur with a proposed Lucy Street interchange. The existing median opening at southeast 12th Avenue will be closed and relocated to the Turnpike ramp intersection. No access changes will occur at southwest 167th Avenue, Tennessee Road. A public information meeting was held on January 21st, 2020, to receive public input on the project alternatives. 121 people attended, and 27 written comments were received and responded to. Based on the input received, the main concern is that all Turnpike traffic will use the toll Turnpike ramp and bypass area businesses. The following information addresses this concern. This graphic will be used to highlight the proposed traffic circulation. The view is at Davis Parkway, looking southeast towards Palm Drive. The toll Turnpike ramp will bridge over Palm Drive with a U-turn option at grade level. Providing this additional route will allow for safer, less congested traffic flow through the Palm Drive intersection. The existing US-1 exit ramp will continue to provide access to southbound US-1 and Palm Drive West. The recently improved Davis Parkway exit ramp will continue to provide access to southbound US-1 and Palm Drive East and West. Here are just two examples of signage that will provide clear direction on how to navigate the improvements. In the proposed future conditions, the existing Davis Parkway exit ramp is numbered Exit 1A and the existing US-1 exit ramp becomes Exit 1B. Existing signage will be updated to reflect the new exit numbers. These signs provide road users with business identification and directional information for eligible attractions and businesses. A new sign to be located about one mile north of Davis Parkway will alert drivers that exits 1A and 1B are the last exits for services for the next 23 miles. Motorists that choose to use the toll Turnpike ramp will still have the option to U-turn to access these services. Motorists will be informed through clear signage that their decision to use the Turnpike ramp will result in a toll. There will be multiple toll signs in both the southbound and northbound direction. In summary, the preferred alternative proposes to modify access along US-1, south of Palm Drive, construct a toll Turnpike ramp over the US-1 and Palm Drive intersection, construct a new partial interchange at Lucy Street, and widen Turnpike from four to six travel lanes. The preferred alternative will address the project purpose and need by enhancing safety, addressing 2045 traffic needs, enhancing emergency evacuation, and improving accessibility and mobility. The no-build alternative will also be considered. This alternative assumes no improvements other than routine maintenance through 2045. Advantages of the no-build alternative include no impacts to the physical or natural environment, no additional right-of-way required, and no construction costs. Disadvantages include increased congestion and safety issues. In the 2045 no-build condition, peak hour traffic at the Palm Drive and US-1 intersection will be nearly double current volumes. The poor intersection capacity will result in extensive queuing on southbound Turnpike, with backups extending past Campbell Drive. The local roadway network will also experience extensive congestion. In this video simulation of 2045 no-build traffic conditions, we see the congestion marked by the red cars. That will be a typical scenario. Daily bumper-to-bumper traffic will back up from the Palm Drive and US-1 intersection onto southbound Turnpike, blocking access to the Davis Parkway exit ramp and extending past Campbell Drive. Extensive local roadway network congestion will occur on Palm Drive, approaching the US-1 intersection, and on southbound Chrome Avenue. The preferred alternative was evaluated in detail to analyze potential effects to the social, cultural, natural, and physical environment in accordance with state and federal regulations. These evaluations are documented in the State Environmental Impact Report, or SEER, which is available for public review. The evaluation matrix summarizes the effects evaluation results of the preferred alternative. This exhibit is available for review on the project website and at the Homestead Miami Speedway. One of the unavoidable consequences on a project such as this is the necessary right-of-way acquisition and relocations. On this project, we anticipate needing approximately 15 acres of additional right-of-way and the relocation of one commercial site. All right-of-way acquisition will be conducted in accordance with Florida Statute 339.09 and the Federal Uniform Relocation Assistance and Real Property Acquisition Policies Act of 1970, commonly known as the Uniform Act. If you are required to make any type of move as a result of a Department of Transportation project, you can expect to be treated in a fair and helpful manner and in compliance with the Uniform Relocation Assistance Act. If a move is required, you will be contacted by an appraiser who will inspect your property. We encourage you to be present during the inspection and provide information about the value of your property. You may also be eligible for relocation advisory services and payment benefits. If you are being moved and you are unsatisfied with the department's determination of your eligibility for payment or the amount of that payment, you may appeal that determination. You will be promptly furnished necessary forms and notified of the procedures to be followed in making that appeal. A special word of caution: if you move before you receive notification of the relocation benefits that you might be entitled to, your benefits may be jeopardized. We encourage you to call the Turnpike Project Manager if you have any questions regarding right-of-way acquisition and relocation. The proposed improvements will potentially affect an estimated 11 acre-feet of surface waters. The FDOT will mitigate surface water impacts resulting from the project's construction to meet state and federal requirements. Federal and/or state-listed species may be present or utilize areas within the proposed project, but no adverse impacts are anticipated. Florida's Turnpike Enterprise will continue coordinating with the United States Fish and Wildlife Service and the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission regarding these species. There is no significant change in flood risk as a result of the proposed improvements, and minimal impacts are expected to the 100-year floodplain. Impacts will be mitigated through stormwater system design. Results of the contamination screening show that one site ranked "high-risk" and one site ranked "medium-risk" could be potentially impacted by the preferred alternative. These sites will be further evaluated during the design phase to identify options to avoid, minimize, or mitigate contamination involvement. A noise study was conducted in accordance with state and federal regulations to evaluate traffic noise levels for the proposed improvements. Residences in Colony Lake Apartments, Monterey Point Apartments, Tennessee Estates, and the southern end of Lakeshore condominiums are impacted locations where noise walls were determined to be potentially feasible and reasonable. These locations will be reevaluated for potential noise barriers during the design phase. The total project cost for the preferred alternative is $224 million in 2021 present-day cost. Included in this estimated cost are design, right-of-way, construction, and other services. We continue to encourage public input to help us make this important decision. You can submit written comments at the project website, www-turnpikesouthmiamidade.com. If at the Homestead Miami Speedway, you can complete a printed comment form; you can email the project manager directly. And lastly, you can mail in your written comments. For the benefit of our listen-only participants, the project manager's contact information is Jaslyn Heywood, J-A-Z-L-Y-N-H-E-Y-W-O-O-D, at Florida's Turnpike Enterprise, PO Box 613069, Ocoee, Florida, 34761. Her telephone number is 407-264-3298. While written comments and questions are accepted at any time, they must be received no later than July 30th, 2021, to become part of the public hearing record. The next step is to incorporate your input on this public hearing into our decision-making process. The comment period will close on July 30th, and your input will be considered. The final PD&E document will then be provided to the District Secretary of Florida's Turnpike Enterprise for approval. The PD&E study is expected to be complete in October of 2021. Potential future project phases of the preferred alternative include design, right-of-way, construction, and maintenance. This project has and will continue to comply with all applicable state and federal rules and regulations. Thank you for your interest in this project.
Thank you for your attention to that presentation. Before we begin the public comment period, we would like to invite all participants to complete an exit survey to provide feedback on how this public hearing was conducted. If you join us online, you will be prompted to take this survey when you leave the webinar. If you join us in person, the exit survey is printed on the back of the comment form. Thank you in advance for your feedback. We will now begin the public comment period. Please note that we will not respond to your comments and questions today, but will respond in writing at a later date. If attending at the Homestead Miami Speedway, please fill out a request-to-speak card to comment at a microphone. There is also a court reporter to whom you can provide your comments directly. Virtual participants that requested to speak when registering will be called upon at the appropriate time. appropriate time. Before I... What we're gonna do is we're gonna turn over to the Homestead Miami Speedway where Cassie will moderate the comments. But before we do, we do have one more online registration of an elected official, and that would be George Abreu from the staff, and that staff from the Office of Miami-Dade Commissioner, Keone L. McGee. Cassie, please moderate the comment period for the participants at the Homestead Miami Speedway. Thank you.
Thanks, Jaslyn. Before we get to the comment period, are there any other elected officials that came in a little bit late or were not recognized prior to the presentation that would like to be recognized now? Yes, sir, you in the blue.
Greetings. State Representative, Chairman, for the House, this is Jaclyn Heywood.
Thank you.
Representative, General Assembly, for the House, District 1.
Thank you very much. So we're gonna start with the request to speak cards. I have... I have 11 cards that... Or 11 people that have requested to speak that have filled out a card. If anyone did not fill out a request to speak card and would like to speak, please raise your hand, and a member of the team, project team, will come around and give you a card. Once you fill it out, please return it to anyone with a name tag, and they will get it back to me. Okay? When you come up to the microphone, you need to come up and stand on this red X. I'm told the microphone does not work unless you're on that red X. Also, please clearly state your name and your address as this is being recorded, and we are having it transcribed by a court reporter. If you do not wish to make us... To speak, there still are written comment forms that are available to fill out, or if you prefer, you can make a statement to the court reporter that's... Oh shit, that's violet over there in the green shirt. Okay? So I am going to call up one person at a time. I'm also gonna let everybody know who is on deck so that person can be ready as soon as the other person is done that they can come up. And I am going to apologize in advance if I butcher anybody's names, and please feel free to correct me. The first speaker is Prem Saran Patel. Prem Saran. And on deck is Leah Duran.
Thank you. Okay, my name is Prem Saran Patel, and I'm one of the owners of Travel Lodge and Quality Inn and other two hotels, which is home to suites. And we have been operating businesses in Florida City for the past 30 years, and we employ about 60 full-time personnel as managerial, front desk, back of the house, maintenance, housekeeping, and security jobs. We have won Properties of the Year twice. The flyover project will be extremely detrimental to our businesses and, more importantly, our employees and will eviscerate the same. Our employees and their families would suffer the worst impact due to the flyover project. We will be forced to lay off the vast majority of our employees as the demand for our services would decrease drastically. The project will also put the owners in a precarious position with financial institutions and other stakeholders. We will be unable to pay our bills and be hard-pressed to meet our financial obligations as a business. I don't think we support this project at all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next up, we have Leah Duran, and then on deck, we have Wish Bay Pierre.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Leah Duran. I'm the Chief Legislative Assistant for State Senator Anna Maria Rodriguez. This... Sorry. While Senator Anna Maria Rodriguez was unable to be here personally, I am here to express her concerns regarding the proposed FDOT changes to the turnpike and how these proposed changes will adversely affect the current and future businesses of this area. While well-intended, these changes will have a chilling effect on already struggling businesses due to COVID-19. I want to thank you all for the opportunity to speak here today. It is very important to our office to have an open dialogue on issues like this that affect our constituents, and I hope you take the senator's opinion into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. What was your first?
Whisberg.
Whisberg, I'm sorry. Okay, so we have Whisberg Pierre, and on deck, Angelo Piccon.
Yes.
State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Whisberg Pierre, and I'm... The address is 35202 South Dixie Highway. The concern that I have is not only just as a business owner, but as a citizen of Florida City and seeing how this is gonna have a tremendous impact on the businesses that are located on that... On US-1. The concern that I have, you know, even though based on the model that I'm seeing, it's not affecting my business to the degree like it's affecting other businesses in the area, which is gonna be a tremendous impact, you know, from... Not Car Sound Road, but if we're talking about which from McDonald all the way down to... I apologize about this, but Palm Drive, which you have a lot of business, you know, that are... That are gonna be affected by this situation, especially when you're turning off Palm Drive to go to Robert's here, going to the Everglades, going to the... Airboat rides and so on. So I truly believe that this right here is not something that is gonna be feasible for the people that's in that location that have their business. But not only that, but on a long-term effect, you know, because there's a lot of people that have business that are in those locations. They're not just business that they have. These are business that are family business. And I truly feel like, you know, this... If there's another alternative that we can take, I would truly like to see if there was another alternative that could be done to fix the situation.
Thank you, Mr. Pierre. Up next, we have Angelo Piccon, and then on deck, Leif Gunderson.
Good evening. My name is Angelo Piccon. The address is 232 Southeast First Avenue, Florida City. And I am the Area Director for KBP Foods in South Florida. We are a KFC, Taco Bell, Long John Silver's franchise. We operate the two-in-one KFC Taco Bell restaurant in Florida City. This unique restaurant is our busiest location, taking care of over 200,000 customers annually. We attribute this volume, in addition to our excellent employees, of course, to the well-located building right on this amazing road between the turnpike and the Florida Keys entrance. Road that this bypass project will completely skip and leave behind. Our restaurant, as well as all the other businesses on this trip, are the to-go places for tourists and locals. It's a well-deserved break on their long commute to and from the Florida Keys. As a result, this amazing volume allows us to employ over 30 workers. 30 families here in this town that are supported by those who work in our location. We provide an opportunity for residents to work and grow in their careers with us, and I know Florida City's business community feels the same way. We are helping this vibrant city to flourish. We're here to join forces in opposition to this wasteful project, a project that will create substantial negative impact and will destroy, actually is destroying, the growth of this town and its neighbors. We know this project is already scaring away new businesses, and if it becomes a reality, will create a negative sales trend that will stop us from helping our residents with jobs that they can count on. Where in the world does it make sense to spend a lot of money on something that will kill long and permanent financial growth? We believe other options can address and solve the issues at hand. This bypass project definitely is not one option that should be on the table. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. We have Leif Gunderson, and then on deck, we have John Dianus.
Thank you. Thank you for inviting us here this evening for this last public hearing for this. My name's Leif Gunderson. I live at 1550 South Golden Island, the city of Homestead. I've resided in the city of Homestead for 63 years. I own the Burger King restaurant in Florida City on US-1. I do not operate. I am the real estate owner of that property. I've owned it for over 20 years. I've been involved in a lot of civic activity over the years, and many of it involved with transportation. I was a member of the... Pointed by the Miami-Dade County Commission to the Citizens Transportation Advisory Committee years ago, spent a long time on that. I was a member and chaired the Enterprise Zone Advisory Committee of Dade County, appointed by the county commission. So I've done a lot about what happens with economic development communities. I'm a retired banker, and I enjoy my life in Homestead, and I'd like to continue such. Let me tell you, this is a terrible project. I am for two parts of this project. The first part being the Lucy Street interchange and the six-laning from Campbell Drive south to Florida City. The detrimental part of this project that will destroy our community, and it will have unknown effects that will linger on for years and years to go, long after we're here, we're gone. This project is... Needs to be reevaluated, and it needs to be reconfigured. The overpass at Palm Drive is absolutely unnecessary. The Department of Transportation has a false premise. The premise is that Palm Drive, the Palm Drive intersection, has caused the delays in the traffic flow and the disintermediation of people in the area there. It's truly not. It's the single lane going southbound in the Keys where the backup takes place. If you take three lanes, six lanes, whatever it is, and you cram it down to the stretch at one lane, okay, you will always have a backup. I have evidence in my package that I'm gonna present today to the department of a photograph I took on July 3 at 11:18 in the morning, holiday weekend. It's a picture showing the intersection of Palm Drive with it backed up. It came... It was backed up further up than Walmart, but the intersection was clear, but it was a green light going south. What happens here is the traffic south of Palm Drive is at a standstill and will not allow anyone north of Palm Drive to continue going south, whether you're coming from US-1 or the turnpike. This whole planning protocol they've gone through, it doesn't take that into consideration, and I think is a false premise. And that's what they're basing this whole plan on about overpassing Palm Drive so that they can keep the flow of traffic moving into the one lane in the Keys. So I would like to present to the department and the planners what I call the People's Plan. It's my recommendation for the third component of it, and I present it today. I have additional copies of it. Somebody'd be interested, they could ask me about it afterwards, but I'd like to go on record saying that this is a bad plan, bad for our community. The planners need to go back to the drawing table. They need to start fresh with this third component of the plan. They need to bring the citizens' input into it from the beginning. This third hearing that we're having today is going through the motions. We're not actually making changes to the plan. We can complain and argue about this all day long, but the plan is pretty well-written in stone. They're not changing it, that I can see, and they haven't so far. But I believe we have our civic duty to protect our community and our families and the people in this community for the long haul, to fight this project, and I hope that you'll rally behind stopping the third component of this project, not the Lucy Street component and not the six-laning. You can bring this down with six lanes and get it at grade prior to Palm Drive, and it will solve the problems, and it will alleviate the dangerous problems for some of the accidents we talked about also with a little better plan. I thank you very much for having us here this evening. I'd like to present it to the department, my written statement, and along with maps and drawings for my People's Plan. I hope you'll come forward, and my name and contact information is here on the document if you'd like to request it from me, but I'd like to have further meetings of organized people who would like to oppose this project. Last, I would like to say one thing that really disturbs me in this day and age. The Department of Transportation has built a lot of roads around the state of Florida. We've seen I-95 and what it did to a low-to-moderate-income neighborhood where it divided a community and destroyed businesses, predominantly black businesses. The city of Florida City has some economic issues and a lot of poverty. I hate to see the Department of Transportation come down here and bypass our community and destroy the economic vitality that we have and what is growing. And I think that if we don't stop this project now, that is what will happen, like what happened by the other communities that allowed these roads to go through and divide their communities. So please stand forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We have John Dianus, and then on deck, Lisa Iamaconi. Please remember to clearly state your name and address for the record, and also remember that you do have a three-minute time limit so that we can give everybody the opportunity to voice their opinions. Thank you.
Hi, my name is John Dianus, and I'm a Vice President of Development for Simon Property Group, and I'm here to represent Florida Keys Outlet Marketplace. We have a regional shopping center on the east side of Route 1 that has been in the community for over 25 years. It is a local community shopping center, but it is also of a regional nature and requires a regional customer base to maintain its viability. We see that the change in access, eliminating the Palm Drive access, the left turn onto Palm Drive, would eliminate our regional access and the nature of that access. If it's relocated to Davis or Campbell or Lucy, Davis right now, Parkway, as we see, already backs up onto the turnpike as it is. And what I see is the solution for access to our shopping center and the local community shopping center is only gonna exacerbate the issue. So I also see some vague 2X, 3X, greater-than crash rates at highways and interchanges, but I've yet to see the examples that they cite when they call out similar intersections. I would like to see that data, and I will request it. Look, this is a regional shopping center. What will occur with the overpass is a bypass to the community. So again, as I reiterate to the other speakers, this plan is not a solution for the community. So we would like to see this plan changed significantly to a more equitable solution for all the players and everybody in the local community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. We have Lisa.
Iamaconi.
Iamaconi, and then on deck, we have John Ward.
Hi, my name's Lisa Iamaconi. It's 33250 South Dixie Highway, Florida City. I represent Texas Roadhouse. I've been operating my restaurant for four years, and it is not only about me. I don't think the plan will impact me as much as some of the others that are in this room, but my business is fed by other businesses that are in our community. The hotels that are in the community send people to me. These hotels are further down south on US-1, and they are going to get affected, and then we in turn will also get affected. We employ 110 employees. That's a lot of people. It's good paying jobs with benefits and vacations and things that people in Florida City need and desire. And some of my employees couldn't get these kind of benefits if we weren't there. They don't... Maybe have driver's licenses, can't travel. So I'm providing something for the community that the community needs and wants. I want to support the other businesses, but I also want my business to succeed, and I feel like this plan is detrimental. I do agree that the six lanes from Campbell, certainly that's a great idea. Even the Lucy Street exit might be a great idea, but the flyover pass is gonna hurt too many of the local businesses, and we're all in this together. It's a growing community and a growing business community, and I feel like we are doing the wrong thing for all the people that have put their hard-earned money and hard-earned work into the community.
Thank you for your comments. Up next, we have John Ward, and then on deck, we have Harriet Devine.
Thank you. As I always say to my mother, thanks for having me. My name is John Ward. I'm the CRA Director for the city of Florida City. You can find me at City Hall 404 West Palm Beach Drive. I used to be in West Palm Beach, but anyway, we're glad to be here. As in so many complicated things, there are good parts to this plan, and there are exceptionally bad parts to this plan, in our opinion. So we're not here to throw the baby out with the bathwater. There need to be some improvements made to the turnpike and some of the exit exit exit.
and some of the exits, exits. And certainly we recognize that. We are here recognizing that we are all about growth. However, as I've, as I've said to my friends and associates in the business community here, I'm in the economic development business. I grow cities. I rebuild old cities. And our presentation is being given to us and has been developed by traffic engineers. Traffic engineers, the job of a traffic engineer is to move a whole lot of traffic through your city as quickly as they can. Don't get off, don't slow down, don't look at whatever's out in the trees, move on through, keep on going, get down to the Keys or wherever it is you're going and don't have a crash while you're going your way there. So that's their job and it's a good job and we need those folks. However, your job as business people is to slow people down, get them to go slower, pull off the highway, spend their money locally, create economic diversity, support jobs, keep our community working, make everybody create a place where they are happy to live and prosper. I don't know about you, but the, the Great Wall of Misfortune that they're about to build down the center of our US-1 median strip is a fairly unattractive thing. And as the earlier speaker said, we've seen examples of this bifurcation of neighborhoods absolutely kill communities, usually poor communities. That's where you always put the highway, where the, you know, that just, just seems to go there. But that is going to kill the views. It's going to depreciate the land values of everything that's there now. It's already, I'd like to say it has a chilling effect on future development. It does not. It is already having a killing effect on future development because we know there are several projects that have already gone on hold. And if you tell me that if I'm, if I'm a business developer and I'm coming and I'm looking at property along US-1 in particular, if I'm looking at that property with an eye toward development of a business, I'm looking at traffic counts and I'm looking at accessibility. And that looks like a fabulous location to me. So now if you tell me that I'm going to take all of that away or a significant portion of it, we're not saying it's all going away, but I don't know what portion is going to go flying over me at 20 feet up in the air and what's going to actually get down on the highway. I know what I've got now, but if you ask me to get out my crystal ball and tell me that, that that is not going to murder my business, I can guarantee you, I'm going to save my money. I'm not going to buy that length. I'm not going to develop that. And we as a city will suffer as a result of it. So, nothing bad here, not a bad project. Am I out of town? Sorry. Nothing bad about that, but there are elements to it that are significant problems and we need to push back against them. So thanks for having me.
Thank you for your comment. We have Harriet Devine and then on deck, we have Frank Balzabre.
I'm Harriet Devine. I'm a resident of Florida City for 20 years. I'm not a business person. I'm not a traffic person. I'm not an engineer. I'm a homeowner in Florida City. And what I see happening to Florida City's tax base is going to affect me. It's going to affect anyone here who is a resident of Florida City. I don't see in any of the studies that they've presented anything that even begins to approach a environmental impact study that includes the economic impact on my city. The five-year cost of construction is $224 million. I want to know what is the five-year or over 20-years loss of tax revenue to the state, to the county, and to my city. I also want to know if the traffic flow study is valid. We all know how horrible the traffic was at Palm Drive and US-1 during the years of construction on the east side of Palm Drive. To me, all of their traffic flow studies that were done from 2018 until now are totally invalid. I also would like to know what the involvement of DOT, that's the federal, District 6 involvement was in the full redesign of US-1. Did they have any impact on it? Did they have any involvement in it? I see no evidence that DOT has been involved in this. I think the people's design, the people's highway is the way to go, but this is too damaging to my community that I dearly love.
Thank you for your comment. Up next, we have Frank Balzabre. And then on deck, we have Florida State Representative Kevin Chambliss. If you could please remember to state clearly your name and address and try to stick to that three-minute time limit. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Frank Balzabre, Director of Community Outreach for Congressman Carlos A. Jimenez, who represents the hard workers, the business owners, corporate owners, and the residents of Florida City, Homestead, Greater South Dade, and the Keys. He couldn't be here tonight. Can you hear me in the back? Can you, he couldn't be here tonight. He's in DC taking votes right now. He wishes he was here. I spoke with him. And just to paraphrase a few things he said, Frank, please be, please share with the following people. I've driven on that road to the Keys regularly for years. And in fact, I represent the Keys. I don't see the need for these proposed improvements. In fact, who asked for them? I support Florida City's position and I'm not in favor of these proposed road improvements, which gets back to his main subject of the economics of the project. I haven't met one person who likes this project. I don't get it. So in that regard, we do look for reevaluation of the project. We look for other solutions, other alternatives, but that's how he feels and that's their statement. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Up next, we have Representative Kevin Chambliss. On deck, we have Clinton Gully.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Greetings. So I'm State Representative Kevin Chambliss, a new state representative for House District 117. The projects, most of it is being planned for my district. And so before we left session, I actually had a conversation with the department, letting them know that after talking with the leaders of the city of Florida City, Mayor and Commissioner, talking with the leaders of the city of Homestead, talking with other colleagues, my colleague to the south, State Representative Jim Mooney, State Senator Anna Maria Rodriguez, you've heard from the representative from our congressman, Carlos Jimenez, we all oppose this. We all stand together united in opposition of this project. We do know that there may be positive points, but extending a bypass past Palm Beach basically writes out the entire economy of a community. And not just for the businesses, for the employees, the people who work at those businesses, who live in our communities and have worked in those businesses for years, their families and the communities that they live in. So we stand up for all of them and say no to this project. This is not the way to go. But not just that, also the process in which this project came about. You see, it's been said by many of the business leaders that when you go and you do such an extensive study and you spend so many, you know, dollars on going into the community and trying to plan for the future of that community, without that community, businesses get wind of that and it destroys the potential plans of that community. We think that that process needs to be changed. This is something that has already, as you've heard, killed business plans for this area. And so we also want to have that conversation. So again, we stand with the community, we stand with this leadership, and we stand in opposition of this particular project. Thank you guys for your time.
Okay, so up next, we have Clinton Gully. And then on deck, Amar Patel. Clinton? Please remember to state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Chairwoman.
Thank you. Yep, right on the red X.
Good evening. My name is Clint Gully. I'm a McDonald's operator and I represent approximately 60 employees in the Homestead and Florida City area. My family and I operate the six restaurants that are located in Homestead and Florida City. This project will have an, a rippling effect, not just on the business owners in this room, specifically the employees and the rep, in the restaurants and the people whom I represent. The McDonald's in Homestead has been there since 1967. A lot of people have gone through there, kids who are now in jobs and positions that you would be certainly proud of. We do more than just sell hamburgers. We train and develop next generation of family leaders, parents, teachers, police officers, political figures, doctors, you name it. A lot of that will diminish if this project proceeds. You know, I found something to be very interesting and I made a notation of it. It's, it's funny and I stopped counting. I lost track. The preferred alternative. How can this project be the preferred alternative? The preferred alternative to death, maybe? But certainly not vitality, certainly not growth, certainly not opportunities for the people who live in the community and the folks who drive up and down US-1 and the turnpike today. We serve in our restaurants by over 500,000 customers a day. So we have six restaurants. Six times 500,000 customers. I said a day, I meant a year. Okay? That's a lot of people. So two of our restaurants, right there on US-1, serve a million and two customers per year. The Walmart, it's not as large. The other two restaurants serve a million, two restaurants, a million, two customers per day. Our businesses, whether you're talking about a hotel, a restaurant, a gas station, some of the people who stop make impulse buying, that's for sure. But we are also a destination. People look forward to coming to the Comfort Inn, to Travelodge, to Dunkin' Donuts, to the hotels, to the restaurant. They are planning their trip. And this project is going to eliminate money that is going to, and normally would be going to, the business owners and the employees who are working in those restaurants. So I have to tell you that this is not the preferred alternative.
Thank you for your comment. Up next, we have Amar Patel. And then on deck, we have Marshall Walker.
Hello, my name is Amar Patel. I am the owner of the Fairfield Inn and Suites at 60 Southwest 352nd Street, Florida City, Florida. You know, I represent, along with Prem Sharon, over 1,000 hotel rooms in the area. We have $4 million in tax revenue that we generate. We have over 200 employees. And from everyone I've heard, I'd like to do something. Anyone for this plan, say yea. Anyone against this plan, say nay. I'm pretty sure that's unanimous. You know, looking at this and talking to the people that are coming up with this plan, there is a complete lack of consideration of the current financial impact that this is having on the community, right? I know the other elected officials can't say it, but Wawa and Chick-fil-A and Publix don't want to be here because of this. These are actual corporations that decided because of your decisions and your planning to not come here. And that has a financial impact on everyone that lives here and does business here, okay? Your motivation is to move people past this area as quick as possible, as Mr. Ward spelled out. Our, our job is to keep them here. We built, I put $20 million into a hotel to keep people here, not move them down the road. And you're moving them down the road to a place that doesn't want them. The Keys don't want more people. They literally put a moratorium in, in the eighties to not put more hotel rooms because they want less people. I don't know why you're, there's this obsession with moving more people down. It doesn't make any sense. The other issue is conflict. The same company that's going to bid for the design of this project, AECOM, employs the people that came up with the traffic studies. I'm not sure if you guys knew that, but now you do. I'm not saying there's a conflict, but you know, it doesn't seem right to me. You know, there's no lack of alternatives. You're saying alternatives, alternatives, there's one. We've seen one. I spoke to someone that did the traffic studies. She said there were 10 other alternatives. No one has seen a single alternative. The only thing that we've seen or heard from them is that all the alternatives were failed. Well, okay, well, which one was the next best one? No, no, they all failed equally. It's not possible. Give us other alternatives. Look at other alternatives. Have two exit, two lanes coming off of, merging onto US-1. Have one lane doing a right turn onto Palm Drive going west. Have one lane bypass go over and do a flyover to, you know, going east on Palm Drive. These are all options that would work, but no one has seen a study that even shows us what that would, that would look like and if it would be a better option. You know, the other issue is, is that they discuss is, is lanes, lane diving, lane diving for people making a left turn on the west on Palm Drive. Yeah, well, what's going to happen when someone, and we know tourists, I mean, I love them because they pay for my bills, but they're not the best judge of character or, you know, they're not the best decision makers when they're driving an RV to, while towing a boat. They get onto the bypass and all of a sudden, they're now landing at Southwest 352nd, wanting to go to Burger King and have to make a U-turn right where Carson Road is joining onto US-1. And then they're going to make another U-turn to go back around again. No one's going to do that. So you guys are creating a situation in which no one is going to want to stop in this area. You know, that's my time and you know, hopefully we figure out a way to defeat this because this isn't right.
Thank you for your comment. Up next, we have Marshall Walker.
My name is Marshall Walker. I live at 68 Bahama Avenue, Key Largo, Florida. And by my dress, you can see I dressed up. I'm from the Keys. This, this is as good as it gets. And I want to congratulate the prior speakers on reasoned, well-thought-out comments. The first thing, I'm, I'm very much impressed by that. These, these meetings can be very emotional and, you know, we're talking about people's businesses and y'all are doing great. I have a little bit different perspective on some of the, the things that are going on because I live in the Keys. I have worked up in, in Homestead area and John and, and Mayor Wallace has done wonderful things here for, for this community. But I'm mostly concerned about the flyover at Palm Drive because the flyover is going to take traffic that, that lands basically in something called economic development area, economic impact area. And it's going to move it out of that. So we have incentives to hire people and, but that stops right about at the Burger King, I think. So the, the flyway is going to take it over that and people are going to be dumped out outside of that area. It's going to have, as everyone else has said, a negative impact on Florida City and Homestead. We shouldn't do that. That, that's a bad thing. It's going to take people and it's going to put them further south on the stretch. More people. We don't, we in the Keys don't particularly want more people down there. More people, we don't, we in the Keys don't particularly want more people down there. It's going to cause more problems on the stretch. It's going to cause more problems where I live in Key Largo. The traffic will go up and traffic's pretty bad right now. And ask Jimmy Mooney, traffic in Alamo Morata is crazy bad. And this is not going to be a good thing for that as well. So again, I have two issues. I think as an area of critical concern, this is something that DEP is going to want to take a look at. And as a matter of the economic impact that it's going to have on the taxed advantage areas, that's going to have a negative impact. And Upper Keys is going to have more people. We don't need more people. We got plenty of them. We love you guys. We want y'all to come down. But but we're maxed out. So that's all I have to say. Thank you so much. And you guys are great.
Thank you for your comment. And up next we have Erica Avila.
Thank you. I am City of Homestead Councilwoman Erica Avila and I am here in opposition of this project. You've heard everyone before me say it. There are solutions to the traffic problem, but that middle concrete barrier dividing the city is not part of that solution. I really urge you to go back to the drawing board, reassess, redesign it. A lot of smart people have put this plan together, all these billboards we're seeing here. Put your thinking caps back on and start fresh. Remove that concrete barrier from the street. Let these businesses that have worked so hard to get to where we are today, recovering from COVID, providing jobs for the people there in Florida City, let them continue to work with what they've got. Let's not go backwards. And face it, this is, you've heard of trickle down. This is going to trickle up. This is going to be a problem for our city as well. So we have to stand together and united against this project. And if it does happen, I hope that you have a plan to send some of that lost opportunity in those tolls that you're collecting back to the city. So thank you.
Okay, I believe that completes all the speaker cards that I have. If anybody else would like to make a statement, please fill out a request a speaker card at this time. So the signups online were to register for the public hearing. If you registered on the website to speak, it would be for the virtual component. So there might have been a little bit of confusion, but yes, if you'd like to make a statement, please just grab a speaker request card and we'll get you guys up here. As a matter of fact, if you if you if you want to just come up and make your statement and then we can have you fill out the card later, that's fine too.
Robert Moling.
Okay, you'll have to speak on the red X, speak your name and address, please.
Robert Moling, one nine two zero zero Southwest three forty-fourth Street. And Robert is here. I've been watching this I've been watching this community pretty much be pushed around by politicians and government officials and this that and the other by destroying the Redlands area. And now we got DOT pushing around our little city of Florida City. Has anybody ever seen any construction done on the roads around here? The canal being filled in in Florida City at least a year and a half to two years. Lucy Street going to BJ's. They say this is going to take two and a half years, only two and a half years, to put this monstrosity right through the Florida City US one corridor there. And we all know it's going to take five years. How many businesses here in this school community can stand over a year of shutdown? Look what COVID did to us and we're back going again, but five years and more, two and a half years is horrible. I don't understand who thought of this idea to make this happen and all to achieve all this traffic to go three quarters of a mile further south, reduced into one lane. Think about that. Everybody's going to rush to get through Palm Drive and bypass all our businesses to go three quarters of a mile further south to be narrowed into one lane. These are college educated people designing this. I didn't go to college. I watched my college go by me because I was working in the middle of the damn street my whole life since I was six years old. And holy cow, I've seen some mess ups by educated people. Let's not let this happen. We do not want this to go through Florida City. And we got to talk loudly to our governor. From what I understand, I've got sixty employees in my little business I've got. Our governor's got to stop this because I don't think it's going to happen anywhere under that. We need to write letters to our governor. From what I understand, he stopped something earlier this year already of similar proportion. And why not do it again? We vote, we pay taxes, we're part of this country. Let's see if we can do it. Can we get the address of the governor? I'm sure we can. Call him up. Everybody's got to do this. You don't want this happening. This is not good. We've heard from people a lot smarter than me how bad it is. But always remember, sixty-two years I've been on that corner. Robert is here and I want to stay. I'm out.
For your comments. Up next we have Mayor Steve Losner from the City of Homestead. On deck we have Mayor Otis Wallace from the City of Florida City.
Thank you. I'll try not to repeat so much of the good things that have been said and the wonderful insights from across the board. I'm Steve Losner and I'm mayor of Homestead and I want to be very clear and unambiguous. When it comes to the flyover or bypass portion of this project, Homestead stands with Florida City. We will not stand by silently while the economic fabric, the social fabric of a community is potentially, will be ripped apart by this project. But let's not forget, many of these business owners and hundreds of the employees potentially impacted in Florida City live in Homestead. So we, you know, we'll be a little selfish. And I I hope I'm not putting words in Mayor Wallace's mouth, but we truly believe that a viable alternative to the backup onto the turnpike at Palm Drive is the immediate and expedited construction of the interchange at Lucy Street as an alternative entrance or or throughway over to US one that can be the the business exit into Florida City. If it needs to be, it would be of great benefit to all of our residents of of Homestead and Florida City lying east of of US one as well as the the widening of the turnpike. Because let's face it, we all know those of us that suffered with Chrome Avenue for so many years, bad roads do not stop tourism. Sorry, guys, people are going to continue to come to the Keys. Even if the stretch was still a lane and a half wide, they're still going to come to the Keys. So let's not kill them on the turnpike on the way down. So we stand with you, Mayor Wallace. We've been in in continuous contact with all of our representatives from, you know, Congressman Jimenez down to Representatives Chambliss and Mooney in the Keys as well as Anna Maria Rodriguez. And let me tell you, I have never seen as many public officials from across the spectrum as united as we are on this issue. Let's take a step back, let's go forward with the Lucy Street interchange, the widening, but the the bypass needs to needs to stop. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next we have Mayor Otis Wallace from the City of Florida City.
Good evening. I'm Otis Wallace, the mayor of Florida City, and I've been mayor of Florida City for a real long time. I've seen hundred-year hurricane events destroy my city. I've seen floods that sent John boats, canoes and catfish down my street. And even now we face COVID nineteen, which is threatening all of our business community. And you know, Mayor Losa and I, we have to deal with that. These are, these are acts of God. You roll up your sleeve and you get back out there and you do what you got to do. But what's being proposed here is not an act of God. This destructive plan is an act of a proposed act of mere men and women. And that's where we draw the line. I know they have good intentions. We have traffic problems, but there are ways to fix it. But people can never be the sacrificial lamb for solving any problem. No problem can be solved by destroying people. On paper, I saw this beautiful slide, oh, it solves all the problems of the world. It takes cars and magically elevates them to the sky over Florida City and dumps them on a one-lane road going to the Keys as they wave at Burger King, McDonald's and all the businesses and all is well with the world. There won't be a car on the eighteen-mile stretch. There won't be any traffic jams. This problem solves all of it on paper. But you know, I'm not the mayor of a town on paper. My people live, work and support their families in reality. If we operated on paper, I would just simply draw up a plan on paper, producing jobs in the sky, on paper to match the roadway in the sky. If we're dealing with paper solutions, the problem, I'll draw up one too, but we both know that's folly. And a couple of things that bothers me about this whole plan here. First of all, you saw the introduction, South Palm Drive to Campbell Drive, South of Palm Drive. It did, it's three fifty-second. It goes all the way down to the raceway station. Any businesses north of that is going to be affected. One thing I didn't hear, I'm talking about people, because I represent people. Two and a half to three-year project. Have you heard anything about business disruption income for you? You know what happens when you people can't get to your business, you lose revenue. Have you heard anything about money being allocated to see you through those tough times? I didn't. I heard about concrete and roads and what they caused, but I heard nothing at all about how we're going to help our businesses. That was missing. And this particular project is already killing Florida City today, not yesterday. Today, I talked to a developer that wants to build on this stretch today. And they had one question for me as mayor. Is the flyover going to happen? It's killing us, killing us now. So what we wish to say to you today is we support the Homestead portion. And by the way, Mayor, you heard anybody talk about if you get your interchange on Lucy? All those people come off the turnpike unless I'm stupid. And if they come off the turnpike, they don't ever ever get to Palm Drive. And am I correct or is that just a Florida City train of thought? You exit Lucy Street, you never can just Palm Drive. I didn't hear them mention that. And the other thing that I am concerned about is we have put together our own traffic plan, by the way. I met with DOT virtually on Friday and Florida City has another traffic plan that they just got to alleviate the traffic on Palm Drive. But I will not stand for Florida City to ever be the sacrificial lamb of another community. The Keys is a wonderful place, but I don't want to get stepped on by anybody who's just trying to get there. And they don't want this project either. And and I'm proud of all the politicians in the room, all Democrats and Republicans, all of them. Every single one of them is against this project. Again, as Mr. Gully said, how can this be a preferred plan when nobody prefers it at all? Thank you very much.
I'd like to thank you all for speaking and I'd like, Jaslyn, I'm going to turn it back over to you so we can listen in on the virtual comments.
Thank you, Cassie. We will now call upon our online participants who requested to speak at registration. When you are muted by the organizer, please also make sure to unmute your microphone using the GoToWebinar control panel as shown on this slide. State your name and address. If you represent an organization, municipality or other public body, please provide that information as well. We ask that you limit your comment to three minutes. So we're going to go down a list. Again, these folks requesting to speak at registration, some may not be online, but we're going to go through all the names and make sure we call their names. The first person would be Councilman David Webb.
Thank you for taking my question. Extraordinarily articulate and passionate comments from the residents of this service of Florida City and Homestead will hit the mark. What I'd like to do though, since I'm the councilman and a resident of Alamo Morata, is offer a slightly different perspective. Everybody who has spoken so far has clearly showed that whether you have two lanes, four lanes, six lanes or eight lanes of turnpike traffic coming down towards the Keys, once you hit the stretch, it's one lane in and one lane out. So the engineering puzzle that is attempted to be solved here doesn't seem to actually work. What I believe is actually happening here, and some of the folks in the land that are not aware of this, in twenty twenty-three, one more county is technically going to be backed out. No more residential or commercial building permits will be issued, even though there will be building lots, buildable lots still available in the individuals. The state and accounting agencies are going to be in position to have to resolve that and probably going to have to purchase those properties from those individuals that are going to be permitted. The number of lots that can be built in part is determined by how many people can evacuate out of my rural county in twenty-four hours. I offer that we must consider that the turnpike extension and widening is not so much to get people into the Keys as it is to get people out with evacuation. And it would be likely also that the state can claim that they can get more people out by widening the turnpike and they're going to allow more development, more destruction, more destruction of environmentally sensitive areas in already overdeveloped rural county. So I I think we must at least consider that Florida City and to a lesser extent Homestead, businesses and economies may be being sacrificed by the state of Florida to allow them to not have to purchase property and to continue to develop on their county past twenty twenty-three. Thank you very much and I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you for your comment. Next we will have Shaun, sorry, Councilman Shaun Fletcher.
Yes, thank you. This is Councilman Shaun Fletcher, City of Homestead, one hundred Civic Court. Just to reiterate and the thought process of my colleagues that I also do not support this expansion project and I will yield my time to others who may have more pertinent discussion topics. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Next we have Jackson Hurst and behind him we will have John Coco. Jackson Hurst is not online. So we will move next to John Coco, who is also not online. Next we have Jenny Faze, not online. Asha Bezing. Okay, we will proceed. Alfonso Perez. Same, not online. Ida Gutierrez. Not online. And the final one that person or participant that requested to speak at registration is Ernesto Penaro, Ernesto Canaro, who is also not online.